Good evening, everyone. The June 5th, 15th, 2020 Virtual Meeting of the Anaronda County Council is now in session. This evening, we will hear and vote on several bills and a resolution. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Rodvian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Here.
Madam Auditor.
Present.
Madam Legislative Counsel.
Present.
Madam Chair or Counsel are present.
Thank you. Please pause for the invocation led by Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Yesterday was Flag Day, so I'd like us to take just a moment to hear a poem about Flag Day. "Betsy's Battle Flag" by Mina Irvin. "From dusk till dawn, the livelong night, she kept the tallow dips alight, and fast her nimble fingers flew to sow the stars upon the blue. With weary eyes and aching head, she stitched the stripes of white and red, and when the day came up the stair, complete across a carven chair hung Betsy's battle flag. Like shadows in the evening gray, the Continentals filed away with broken boots and ragged coats, but hoarse defiance in their throats. They bore the marks of wanton cold, and some were lame and some were old, and some with wounds untended bled, but floating bravely overhead was Betsy's battle flag. When fell the battles, led in rain, the soldier hushed his moans of pain, and raised his dying head to see King George's troopers turn and flee. Their charging column reeled and broke, and vanished in the rolling smoke before the glory of the stars, the snowy stripes and scarlet bars of Betsy's battle flag. The simple stone of Betsy Roth's is now covered, is covered now with mold and moss, but still her deathless banner flies and keeps the colors of the skies. A nation thrills, a nation bleeds, a nation follows where it leads, and every man is proud to yield his life upon a crimson field for Betsy's battle flag."
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act Statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. "The Maryland Open Meetings Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. General provisions, Article, Section 3, 102(c). The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the governor's various executive orders limiting public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, and allowing written public comments to the legislation be filed with a clerk and considered by the council. The county Office of Law has appined that the public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public and therefore complies with the Open Meetings Act."
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the county, with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form, review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. Because this is a virtual meeting, we cannot be physically located in Annapolis, the county seat, and we cannot provide reasonable seating facilities for the news media. May I motion to suspend Rules 3-103 and 3-106?
Lacy, so moved.
May I have a second?
Rodvian, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend Rules 3-103 and 3-106.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to suspend Rule numbers 3-103 and 3-106 is passed.
In addition, we cannot provide reasonable seating for the public, and we cannot offer members of the public who wish to speak at invitation-to-audience or on agenda items, opportunities to testify directly before the county council. However, testimony has been received through our online testimony tool, has been reviewed by the council members, and is posted online for the public to view, and counts of the submissions will be announced at the proper times. May I have a motion to suspend Rules 3-105?
Lacy, so moved.
May I have a second?
Rodvian, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend Rules Rule 3-105.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to suspend Rule number 3-105 is passed.
We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have had two submissions of written testimony, which was shared with the council and posted on the website.
Thank you. Invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I just have one correction to the agenda. For Bill 5220, I am noted as a cosponsor. That should have me as a cosponsor on Bill 5320 and not 5220. It is correct on the actual legislation.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Lacy, so moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Councilman Pruski, second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 4720, An Ordinance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anaronda County Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes. Bill Number 4820, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service. Bill Number 4920, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Court and State's Attorneys' Employees' Pay and Benefit Plan. And Bill Number 5020, An Ordinance Concerning Conveyance of Surplus Property, Unimproved County-Owned Property Near Furnace Branch Road in Glen Burnie, Maryland. Bill Number 5120, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Credits, Public Safety Officers' Property Tax Credit. Bill Number 5220, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning on Shops. Bill Number 5320, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works, County Rights of Way, Zoning, Small Cell Systems, Commercial Telecommunication Facilities.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
We have no resolutions.
Oh, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9-20 as amended.
Bill Number 920, An Ordinance Concerning 2020 Amendments to the Anaronda County Solid Waste Management Plan 2013.
Thank you. This is a county executive bill. May we bring forward Mr. Barron and his team at this time? Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council. Joining me at the virtual table is Mr. Bowen from DPW and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. If you all recall, we have discussed Bill 920 a couple of times now in the past. The primary purpose of Bill 920 is to revise the county's solid waste management plan to update references to certain facilities, as well as the county's expanded composting facility. The bill was amended at the, I believe it was at the previous regularly scheduled council meeting to include language related to a state requirement on large office building recycling programs. It's important to note that the inclusion of any private facility in the solid waste management plan is not an approval of the facility. This is just a step in the larger process. With that, we ask that the council pass the bill tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time of the council? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We have had no submissions of written testimony on this bill.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9-20 as amended.
Bill Number 9-20, An Ordinance Concerning 2020 Amendments to the Anaronda County Solid Waste Management Plan 2013.
Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none? Madam Secretary, on Bill Number 9-20.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 9-20 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 16-20 as amended.
Bill Number 1620, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts, Community-Based Assisted Living Facilities 1 and 2, Group Homes 1 and 2, and Rooming Houses.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey is the sponsor of this bill. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. I just want to thank my colleagues. We are now, I don't know, probably at least three months into this bill. Hopefully, everybody has a chance to look for it and have any questions if they have about the bill answered. So that is amended from a whole that we can get this all designed.
Would the administration like to weigh in at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Lori Rhodes from Office of Planning and Zoning and Mr. Greg Swain from Office of Law. I think I neglected to state my name, Pete Barron. The, we also have Mr. Stephen Kai-Ziegler from Office of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Adrian Meckler from Mental Health, from Aging and Disabilities, Ms. Pam Jordan, Ms. Sarah Stein, and I believe Ms. Jennifer Jackson and Ms. Joelle Ridgway in the virtual waiting room if there are any questions. The administration has laid out its concerns with this bill in the past. I believe some of the amendments do address a couple of our concerns. However, I will just reiterate that balancing the competing interests of proper land use and the need for providing the types of services that the facilities in this bill provide is a difficult job, and the administration is just not comfortable that they, that proper balance has been struck in this bill. I will add, I did see, I believe it was at the previous hearing on this bill, some testimony from one particular community about one particular facility. I just want to be clear that this bill would have no effect on, on the one property that was subject of a number of pieces of public testimony from a community in the northern part of the county. So with that, the administration is happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from the members of the public on Bill 1620 as amended?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have had, we have had 30 submissions of written testimony, which we shared with the council and posted on the county website.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill 1620 is amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 16-20 as amended.
Bill Number 1620, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts, Community-Based Assisted Living Facilities 1 and 2, Group Homes 1 and 2, and Rooming Houses.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 16-20 as amended.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill Number 1620 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 17-20 as amended.
Bill Number 1720, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Tax Credits.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We discussed this bill at the previous regularly scheduled meeting. Actually, sorry, apologies. Let me introduce the folks who are with me. For the admin in the Office of Budget, we have Mr. Beecham from Finance. We have Ms. McQuaid from the Office of Law. We have Ms. Kelly Kenny. From the Police Department, we have Captain Hassan Push. And from Fire, Chief Dinkle are both in the virtual audience. We discussed this bill at the previous regularly scheduled meeting. The administration would like to bring the ability to apply for this tax credit to 911 specialists. The administration supports the bill, obviously, and would like a favorable vote tonight. Hopefully, everybody will support this, and we can sign this and open up the ability to get a small tax credit to a small handful of very important people in our county. So with that, please move favorable.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public on Bill 17-20 as amended?
No, Madam Chair. We have received no submissions of written testimony on this bill.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 17-20 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 17-20 as amended.
Bill Number 1720, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Tax Credits, 911 Specialist Tax Credits.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 17-20 as amended.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1720 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 20-20.
Bill Number 2020, An Ordinance Concerning Ethics Conflicts of Interest.
Thank you. The public hearing has concluded on this bill. Mr. Barron, this is an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the virtual table from the Office of Law is Mr. Swain, and from our executive director from the Ethics Commission, Mr. Botzares. I understand there will be an amendment at this time. We will comment that, on that at the appropriate time, but just to remind everybody, this is a bill to help ensure we can get good volunteer help for the numerous boards and commissions in this county. So with that, we'll wait to comment on the amendment.
Are there any questions for the administration from the council at this time? Seeing none. There is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment excludes... There we go. "This amendment excludes non-compensated board and commission members from the prohibition against employees representing or assisting others in certain matters, and prohibits non-compensated board and commission members from assisting or representing a person for contingent compensation in certain matters."
Is there a motion to adopt?
Volkey, so moved.
Is there a second?
Hare, second.
I believe this is Mr. Volkey's amendment. You have the floor, sir.
It is. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. If I have any issues with my audio, please let me know. So basically, this amendment has been passed through the Ethics Commission. Mr. Botzares has been kind enough to review it, as well as to have the Ethics Commission for the county review it. They have approved that this is an appropriate change to the ethics law.
We got your back. You're good. You can continue.
Okay. They've, they have approved that this is an appropriate change to the ethics law, and this is a slightly less complicated change to the ethics law than what was originally being proposed, but I believe it still captures the intention that the administration had to allow board and commission members who are serving in a non-compensated fashion for the county to still represent individuals before the county for something other than contingent compensation. So with that, if I've gotten anything wrong, I would just rely on Ms. Schuet to correct any mistakes that I've made. But otherwise, I think that that is a fair characterization of the bill, excuse me, of the amendment to the bill, and I would ask that my colleagues support it because I think it makes it a little more clear that county employees still cannot represent anyone for compensation in front of the county, which is what we wanted to make sure was very clear from the ethics law. And I think the way that the bill was originally drafted, it might have created some confusion there.
Thank you. Would the administration like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the administration. When we drafted the legislation, I think Councilman Volkey captured our intent correctly. We believe, to be clear, we believe the way the bill was drafted initially would not jeopardize any kind of backdoor to allow any, anything unethical. That said, the, the amendment that Ms. Schuet and Mr. Volkey drafted do accomplish the same goal as the administration, and the administration has absolutely no objection to this way of going about it. Mr. Volkey came at it from one direction. We were coming at it from another. We're getting to the same place.
Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number 1? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 39-20.
And Madam Chair, you may want to announce that Bill 2020 is amended. Will be back on, I believe, I believe, I believe July 6.
Bill Number 20-20 as amended will be heard on July 6, 2020. We're, we're in, we're on a roll, Madam Secretary.
I'm sorry.
Please read the title of Bill Number 39-20.
Bill Number 39-20, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer, and Supplementary Appropriation.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the table is Mr. Teroux from Budget. Well, looks like he might be coming. We have a couple of people switching around. Ms. Jordan from Aging, along with Ms. Owen, and from Law, Ms. Lori Blair Klosmeyer. I'm gonna wait a second while Mr. Teroux joins us. Thank you. Would be nowhere on this bill without Mr. Teroux. This is our fourth quarter transfer bill. Bill 3920 provides for the transfer of appropriation authority between county departments within the general fund and other funds. Section 1, the bill transfers $5,182,000 from the Health Department to a variety of agencies. Mr. Teroux can explain in further detail if there are any questions. I would like to remind the council that the CAO Contingency Fund was transferred to the Health Department in Bill 2520, which is why these funds are coming from health. Section 2 recognizes unappropriated fund balance in other special funds and provides for a supplemental appropriation authority of the like amount, of the like amount. Again, happy to answer any questions on that. We do have two amendments to offer at the appropriate time, and I will comment on those at the appropriate time. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, my colleagues? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question in terms of the removing money from the Health Department. It wasn't, like you mentioned, it wasn't very long ago that we appropriated a lot of money to the Health Department. And I believe, actually, a couple of us had an amendment proposed to not transfer quite as much to the Health Department, and sort of the response was, no, 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 the Health Department absolutely needs to have this money to purchase supplies and things like that. So I'm, do they really have this $5 million available? It's a little odd to me that we transferred it in, now we're transferring it out. I'm just trying to understand kind of how this is all came about.
Mr. Teroux, is this question for you, sir?
Well, let me, let me say one thing. Councilwoman Hare, it's a, it's a very good point. I just want to remind everybody of the timing of when we transferred the money from the CAO Contingency Fund to the Health Department. That was before the arrival of the Federal CARES Act money. So one of the concerns that the administration had at the time was that we were gonna need to bridge the gap was that we were gonna need to bridge the gap for the COVID emergency before some federal assistance arrived. I'll let Mr. Teru address the, if they have the money question.
Mr. Teru.
Madam Chair, members of the council, Stephen Teru from the Budget Office. I concur with everything Mr. Barron pretty much just said. It was just a timing issue. We had to get the funds out as quickly as we possibly could. Luckily, the federal CARES money came in pretty much right after we did that bill, so it wasn't an issue there. Therefore, almost none of the general funds that we sent over to the Health Department ever actually got spent because they were all able to be spent out of the CARES fund.
Thank you. This is Jessica Hare. Can I ask one quick follow up?
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just so that I can sort of follow the money, if you will. We appropriated roughly, or we transferred approximately thirty-eight million dollars to the Health Department. Of that, twenty-seven or so was fund balance, and the remainder was CAO contingency. And then the twenty-seven that was fund balance was just used in the FY twenty-one budget, if I understand that correctly. So the remaining eleven or so that was transferred to the Health, of that, we are now taking away five point one. Is that accurate, accurate?
Stephen Teru from Budget, yes, that's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Can you just, for the record, remind us what what would happen if we were not to pass this bill this evening?
I I think that's a question for Ms. Blair Klausmeyer.
Ms. Klausmeyer?
Lori Blair Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. The end of the question cut off, so if I could just have the question again. What would happen if I got that far?
Ms. Fiedler, would you like to repeat your question?
Certainly. My question was, what would happen if this bill does not pass this evening?
So if this bill does not pass this evening, the five million one hundred and eighty thousand two hundred stays in the Health Budget, and none of the transferred money goes where it's indicated that it's going. And then at the end of, on June thirtieth of twenty twenty, this budget all goes away. And these expenses, I'm assuming that the money is because of outstanding expenses and the outstanding expenses. Does that answer it? I'm sorry.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Fiedler?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry. In other words, this is a balancing of the end of the, kind of the end of the FY twenty.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure I'm entirely clear on what Ms. Blair Klausmeyer was saying in terms of if this is not passed. So I get that this is a balancing amendment. I guess my question is, if you don't pay these things, or if money's not there, what happens? I think that was what Councilwoman Fiedler was trying to get at, and maybe that's not a question for Ms. Blair Klausmeyer at that point, but anyway.
Happens if we have outstanding expenses, for example, the two million dollars in the Police Department that is, I believe, salaries that they've exceeded the appropriated amount. That's a good question. I would assume that people wouldn't get paid if this money doesn't get transferred into the appropriate departmental budget.
So there would be no way that they could tap into their Q one budget for the FY twenty-one budget and then come back with a transfer to subsequently make up the difference early in the newest fiscal year?
Probably a question for either Budget or Finance, but.
Because it's not like the money goes away. I mean, the money is still there in the Health Department, and then it would go as unappropriated fund balance, and it would fall over at the end of the year, but it's not like the money disappears, right?
Appropriation lapses. So there, yes, you're right. The money, appropriation lapses and falls to unappropriated fund balance.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. I I guess I'm just trying to fully understand. If you don't pass this tonight, you indicated people aren't getting paid. And I guess I'm finding that hard to understand because it's not like the money was there. And in the new FY twenty-one budget, there's a whole new pot of appropriated money from which they can draw to pay things. And then if they needed to come back to make up the shortfall, the money is still there unappropriated, and you could have a Q one transfer bill that could fix the overspend from the end of FY twenty. Am I missing that?
Mr. Teru?
Stephen Teru from Budget. So the FY twenty-one budget doesn't technically exist yet, for one, Councilman Volkey. But number two, the expenses are related to the FY twenty budget, which, which as Ms. Klausmeyer explained, lapses at the end of June thirtieth. So that's why we're trying to take care of the expenses that are related to FY twenty in FY twenty.
But I guess my question would be, what if you don't? I mean, are you telling me that the county's really not going to pay people?
I I think that's the, sorry, Stephen Teru from Budget, I think that's the intent of this bill, is to make sure that we can pay people and that we can align the appropriations into the correct character and object, which would be, for the Police Department example, within the Police Department. So we need to move that appropriation, that is the legal authority to spend that money from the Health Department over to the Police Department, so we can legally expand those expenditures.
I I'm tracking with that piece of it, and I understand it and I appreciate it. I guess my question, and I feel like I'm still not understanding the answer to, is and what happens if the money doesn't go there? Are you going to have police officers who don't get paid? Or are you gonna have a scenario where the Police Department now starts immediately on July the first, making sure that all payments that they needed to make are covered in the new budget? And then you're gonna come in with a Q one transfer bill and try to take the unappropriated fund balance, which is now sitting there, and take care of any sort of shortfalls that they've had to make up for the last one? I'm just trying to understand how it works because we always get these transfer bills. There's always a question of whether they're truly an emergency or not. I had a bill that was gonna try to fix this, that then there was so much opposition to, I just pulled and said, get it on, I quit. So I'm just trying to understand what really is the practical impact if this does not go through.
I'm sorry, this is Lori Blair Klausmeyer. So. This, yeah. So any expenditures from fifteen to June thirtieth have to be covered. Any expenses between June thirtieth, fifteenth and June thirtieth have to be covered under the FY twenty budget. And the point of this bill is, they can't be because we don't have, we don't have it appropriate. So you can't push it, you can't push forward, push it forward into a budget that you don't have that. Plus, there's, you know, the notion of balancing this FY twenty budget is important for accounting purposes and many other things. I'm sure the auditor and the finance office can talk about.
Mr. Puski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Auditor, you know, you've been working here in the county for a long time, which transfers, there's some time debates. Is this transfer legitimate to pay bills that we owe?
So it is very common to have a transfer bill come down, and the reason for the transfer bill is because you have departments that are based on the estimates, looking like they're overspending, and you have departments that are underspending. From a fiscal aspect, when we do the CAFER, the annual financial report, I will say it does not look good if we exceed our budgetary authority. I mean, it happens on a rare occasion where it's usually something small, like in an SCBD, that ends up spending something more than what they are budgeted. So that does not look good if that's the way it ultimately ends up. There's, you know, obviously, there's difference differences as to estimates and how, you know, how much they need or things like that in order to balance. But the idea is that you want to try to not exceed this year's budget. That makes.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Madam Chair, just one follow up. I think as the auditor stated, obviously, there is very rare situations, and I've been on the council, where it's happened several times, actually. Particularly for this one, I think we're in the middle of a pandemic, number one. So obviously, there's issues, and I'm sure we could go through that policy. But the second piece, I think the question was raised, whether people are gonna get paid or not. Certainly, if the money's not there, that's a possibility. I don't want to go down that path, and I'm not gonna be voting that way, but, you know, that's a legitimate question. I certainly want to pay our bills. There's things in front of us, but as the auditor stated, as long as things match up and that they're there, and I think some of this is related to a certain situation that we're in from there. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Volkey?
I guess I still am, you know, and maybe I'm just not getting this, but I don't feel like anyone's actually answered the question I have, which is, what happens if this bill doesn't pass? I don't think anybody has answered that question. So if if I could get an answer to that question, I greatly appreciate it because I don't think anybody said it. I mean, it sounds like every, that is best practice. That's what we need to do. We really want to be there. It looks bad on the CAFER, et cetera. But we moved all this money over to the Health Department in the early days of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Some of us said, maybe you should move a little less, and if you need more, come back and look at it again. All this money's now been moved over there, and then all of a sudden, we've used some of it to balance the next budget. So it's just a lot of movement of money going on, and I'm just trying to understand what happens if we don't pass this. And it's it's an emergency bill, so this takes five votes to do it. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, when you have an emergency bill that's very important, needs to be passed, can someone tell me what happens if we don't pass it?
There are several people waiting to speak. I have Madam Auditor, Ms. Schuet. Ms. Schuet, you have your flag. I'll let you speak first.
Thank you. Perhaps this is oversimplified. By departments, the authority, the legal authority to spend the money, and without the bill, there is no legal authority to spend it. You're spending it illegally. Thank you.
Madam Auditor?
Ms. Schuet just said what I was going to say.
Mr. Teru, did you have a comment?
Just one quick comment. Stephen Teru from the Budget Office. I also believe it's a violation of the county charter that says you can't legally go over your appropriation limit. We're trying to change that appropriation limit in this bill to the respective departments, trying to basically not violate the county charter.
Mr. Barron?
I will just add, when we have an amendment coming, that we will also be recognizing some unanticipated grant money.
Okay, so this is Allison Pickard, Chair, District Two. Why wouldn't we take care of the twenty twenty budget expenditures with twenty twenty budgeted dollars in a fourth quarter transfer? I don't understand why we're even. Am I missing something? Mr. Volkey?
Was that a question to me?
No, it was just, I don't understand what this debate is about. We have money in the FY twenty twenty budget. We've moved it places. We're moving it back to cover real expenses in twenty twenty. Why would we kick it to FY twenty-one? I don't understand.
Well, I'm not sure why we're taking it out of the Health Department in this case, when we're in the middle of a global pandemic. I mean, we've been routinely excoriated in the budget process. There was one small bill that we had, I think, something like forty thousand dollars out of the Health Department, and the administration jumped up and down and said, don't move that money out because why in the world would you cut money in the middle of that? Why are we moving five point one million dollars out of the Health Department? So that's, that's where I'm at, and I also don't quite understand how this is an emergency, considering that, I can't imagine you all just figured out, these departments were gonna overspend their budgets by two million dollars. And that's what I'm trying to understand on this whole debate, is you can't tell me that two, three months ago, you weren't projecting upward, knowing that there were gonna be pretty large discrepancies between the appropriated authority and the amount that was being spent.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Volkey, the, in previous fourth quarter transfers, and I believe you and I have only been through one, previous one, the money came out of the CAO contingency fund. That's traditionally where it comes from. The CAO contingency fund, as I stated to Councilwoman Hare's question, was moved to the Health Department before we were aware that we would get the federal CARES money. It was there in case. Fortunately, that situation did not come to pass. So it's perfectly appropriate to move the money now for, to view that money that's in the Health Department as money that was in the CAO contingency fund. And Mr. Teru is shaking his head, so that makes me feel pretty good about my explanation.
Okay, if I may. Oh, sorry.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Rodvian, District Six. I just want to clarify for, maybe this is a question for Mr. Teru, but budgets are our plans of how we intend to spend our money, but circumstances change over the course of time. And actually, in the past several months, they've changed rather dramatically. And we do these transfers quarterly to account for the changes in how the actual spending differs from what we planned in our budget so far. Am I, am I correct? And we could, in theory, do these more frequently. I mean, there's no, except for the fact that the council only meets twice a month. We could be doing these transfers, you know, twice, I guess, what would that be, semi-monthly? But that would involve a lot more work and red tape and paperwork for the offices that are, you know, creating these balancing, sort of these balancing, I guess, amendments. Would that be fair to say, too? So, but the practice has been to do these quarterly. I mean, is that, i- is there a time where you can remember doing a transfer, you know, a big budgetary transfer to account for differing conditions that wasn't quarterly? Have, do we ever do them in a different manner than that? I think you're on, oh, there you go.
Stephen Teru from the Budget Office. Actually, we have started more frequently having quarterly transfer bills. Up until several years ago, it used to be bi-annually, if not maybe only the fourth quarter transfer bill. So they actually have gotten more frequent in the last few years to try to, you know, update the council on kind of the fiscal conditions across the county. If I can just, Madam Chair, address a couple of the points that were made just right now, or if you'd like me to wait.
You, you have the floor, sir.
Madam Chair, I I just would like to remind all the panelists that for the benefit of people who are just listening in and also for our minutes, that we need people to verbally respond yes or no, and not just nod your head. So, thank you.
Stephen Teru from the Budget Office. First, I would just like to address the need for an emergency legislation. We can't amend a budget once it doesn't exist anymore, and I believe, as the Office of Law already stated, this budget will not exist after June thirtieth. So the reason this is an emergency bill is because we need it to go into effect right away and have the ability to amend the bill, such as that we have two amendments to this bill tonight. So we have to be able to introduce and vote on the amendments in order to take effect before the end of the fiscal year. So that is why it's an emergency bill. If you do recall, counsel, we had a bill not that long ago for a third quarter transfer bill. That was almost about a month ago. So that was with data that the Budget Office and departments were probably working through the end of March closed numbers. So to, I think it would probably be an inaccurate statement to say that we didn't know what was going on with the end of the budget year, but we're, we're doing projections back in March when we're trying to calculate this data and trying to project out. That's why we also have from pretty frequent amendments to the bills as we come forward. That's historical practice. We've almost always amended the fourth quarter transfer bill as it is an emergency piece of legislation. It's new data, new information. We just have better data as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. So I hope that addresses some of your questions and concerns.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I just have one question covering.
You're muted, Ms. Fiedler.
Sorry, apparently I can't go between screens. So if I remember correctly, because I can't look and talk at the same time, the Police Department and Personal Services are the two largest. Could you just go into a little bit of detail on why those are being requested and what transpired?
Stephen Teru with the Budget Office. So the Police Department, the largest portion is overtime. I think you heard the Police Department discussing during their FY twenty-one budget, the ability to. I think you heard the Police Department discussing during their FY 21 budget, the ability to upstaffing. So they've really got, done a really great job of recruiting and hiring all of their police officers. That's great, but it does take bodies to run the training academy. And if we filled all of our positions, we don't have savings and salaries and wages to pay for some of that turnover. There's kind of a game that either we're paying it in salaries and wages, or we're paying it in overtime. In FY 20, we happen to have a great recruiting year, and we've hired almost all of our police officers for one of the, I think, either the first or second time in this current chief's, uh, term. That's great. Unfortunately, it does take a pretty long time to train a police officer before he's operational out on the street, so we're not going to see that overtime savings. In fact, it's kind of a double whammy. We don't have salaries, wages, savings this year because we filled all our spots, but they're not operational out in the field to offset that overtime. I believe if you look in the FY 21 budget, we actually have a reduction in Police Department overtime to account for all of those positions we filled in the current year, finally getting out into the street and being operational. So that's the largest portion in the Police Department.
Does that satisfy your, your quest, Fiedler?
I think the other, um, uh, other department was Office of Finance, just looking, um, at the totals.
Stephen True from the Office of Budget. Um, so 1.1, almost 1.2 million dollars had to do with bond issuance costs. Um, so when we go to issue bonds, there's an underwriter fee that we have to pay in order to issue those bonds. That's based on market conditions, is based on the, the risk of, of the bond market. Just so happened, the bond market was not in our favor to sell bonds this year. We sold about the same amount, amount of bonds in FY 20 as in FY 19, so it wasn't how many bonds we sold. It just happened to be market conditions were less favorable than we had anticipated.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Questions are probably from Mr. Teroux still, because he's the one who, so far, has had the answer, so thank you. We transferred about $11 million from the CAO Contingency Fund to the Health Department. This is transferring back 5.1 million. What's going to happen to the balance of the 5.9 million that's still in the Health Department's budget, but that, as we've noted, isn't being used because of the cares money, which is taking care of the COVID-19-related expenses?
Stephen True from the Budget Office. Uh, the same exact thing that'll happen to any unspent appropriation in FY 20, it'll fall to fund balance to be spent in the next year.
Okay, and that's, that's what I thought. So I guess following up on that, I'm looking at the budget presentation from back on May the first, on page seven, uh, which was the slide where the Budget Office talked about fund balance. And on that slide, it noted that the available fund balance as of June 30th, 2020, was $37.7 million. How much of that included this $11 million that was anticipated in the CAO Contingency Fund, having been transferred to Health?
Stephen True from the Budget Office. So that $37 million is made up from some savings in the current year, and the $27 million that we also appropriated to the Department of Health. So you put in the $27 million of unappropriated fund balance that we then appropriated to the Department of Health, plus roughly $10 million countywide, um, worth of savings in the current year. So you've got $27 million that's, hasn't been touched in the Health Department, plus at least this five, plus the rest of the general fund departments are going to save roughly $5 million. That's $10 million worth of general fund savings, plus the $27 million worth of unappropriated fund balance that's now in the Health Department.
So when you're talking about that $27 million of savings, is that inclusive of the $11 million from the CAO Contingency?
That is not. So the $27 million was not on the books technically until we appropriated it to the Health Department. So that $27 million is going to go, remain from, it's going to go from fund balance to the Health Department, back to fund balance. And then across the 1. roughly $7 billion budget across the county, we're counting on $10 million worth of savings, which if you look at our budget presentation and budget book, you'll see which departments have those savings to total bottom line of roughly $10 million.
Okay, so that's how you're achieving the $37 million number. That $37 million number does not count toward this.
Stephen True from the Budget Office. That's correct. Some of those savings are going to be, for example, we transferred 11. almost 8 million dollars from the CEO contingency, and this bill, we're only using 5.1 of that. So the remaining is going to be part of that big savings number that we get to that time.
You're muted, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So then at the time that you presented the budget, were you anticipating using this money? And you'd already fact, I mean, savings, you're pointed out, or shouldn't this, get your 5 million dollars, say, looking, seeing this, with the 10 million savings?
Did you understand that?
Stephen True from the Budget Office. I think I got the gist of, uh, Councilman Volkey's question. Um, yeah, so we anticipate, and you can look in the budget book, we do projections by departments. You can see where some of those savings are. Obviously, the time of the budget book is obviously put together in February, March timeframe, so some of those conditions have changed. But on the whole, we're still right around the same exact place we were in a couple of months ago.
I, I understand that. So I guess the point is, similar to what you were saying, you all knew somewhere around the end of March, April, budget, that probably that you only become, that sort of, or, 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 go. Am I asking that correctly?
That would be a correct assumption. We do not necessarily know which department or what, you know, of, uh, needs it would be for. But yes, roughly, and if you look at our history, it's roughly how much we've had to expend out of the CEO contingency or excess funds in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on Bill 39-20? Seeing none, we will now open the public, public hearing. Madam Secretary, do you have, do we have any testimony received from the public?
No, Madam Chair. We've had no submissions of, uh, written testimony on this bill.
The public hearing on Bill Number 39-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 39-20.
Bill Number 39-20, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appro- Supplementary Appropriation.
Is there any further discussion? I believe there are amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
I will await it showing up on the screen, and then I shall read. Amendment Number One. This amendment increases the appropriation in the Grant Special Revenue Fund to rec- recognize a new grant in the Department of Aging.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Prus.
Is there a second?
Radvian, second.
Is there any discussion? This is a, um, kind of executive amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I will try to be better about saying my name. Pete Barron, uh, for the administration. Amendment One, uh, appropriates a little over a half a million dollars, uh, to the Department of Aging and Disabilities for Meals. I have Ms. Jordan here, uh, if, and Ms. Cohen, if they would like to add anything. Uh, this money was unanticipated, um, from the feds, it, when we did the bill, um, a couple of months ago. Um, so this is a good thing. About a half a million dollars is going to go to help, uh, feed some folks.
Ms. Jordan, did you want to add anything about the grant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we're very excited to, um, have received this unanticipated funding, and we are using it to create some really innovative programming in the community, um, to make sure that everybody is getting fed. So thank you for your favorable consideration. Carissa Gowan, our deputy, is here. She has, uh, run all the numbers. If you have anything more specific, I will, let her speak to that, but thank you.
Is there any discussion? Any further questions for the, um, Office of Aging? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Radvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Lacy?
Hi.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Excuse me. Uh, Madam Secretary, I believe there's Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment increases the appropriation in the Office of Personnel for Contractual Services to be in line with the county auditor's findings and recommendations.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilman Pruski.
Is there a second?
Radvian's second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Uh, Mr. Barron, this is also your amendment.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Pete Barron for the administration. Madam Auditor raised a couple of issues in her blue letter. Amendment Number Two, uh, addresses, uh, those concerns related to the Department of Personnel for Contractual Services. And Mr. Teroux is, uh, well-equipped to answer any questions.
Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number Two? Seeing none? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Radvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Lacy?
Hi.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 39-20 as amended.
Ms. Radvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Lacy?
Hi.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 39-20 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 40-20.
Bill Number 40-20, An Ordinance Concerning Anorond County Consolidated Plan, Fiscal Year 2021 Through Fiscal Year 2025.
Mr. Barron, this is an administration bill. You have the floor to introduce your team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the virtual table, uh, from ACDS is Ms. Kathy Koch. And Ms. Erin Karpowitz, uh, from Office of Law. I will have Ms. Lori Blair Klosmeyer. Bill Number 40-20, uh, is related to the Anorond County Consolidated Plan for FY 20 to, 21, excuse me, to FY 25. Uh, as a recipient of federal housing and community development funds, the county must complete a five-year plan referred to as the Consolidated Plan. This plan includes priorities, goals, strategies, that will guide the investment of housing and community development funds over the next five years. Um, I want to talk a, a little bit about, um, the, uh, public engagement process, uh, that ACDS led. Um, it includes extensive research and, um, outlines the strategies and goals for addressing the needs of the community. Uh, in order to accomplish that, um, they did, and I know this is just the minimum, uh, that they sent me. I'm sure there was much more, engagement, but there were, uh, over three public hearings, a large stakeholder meeting in Severn, focus group meetings with six different groups, strategic planning session with the homeless stakeholder group, approximately 10, uh, individual meetings with specific interest groups, presentations at various community associations, including, uh, the Glenn Burney Improvement Association, um, the, uh, A, the Intermodal Affordable Housing Coalition, the Community of Hope, and, um, the, the plan was also presented to the, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee at least twice. Uh, I have with me, um, Ms. Kathy Koch, who can talk a little bit more about what's actually contained in the plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it over and ask Ms. Koch to say a few words.
Good evening. Um, Kathy Koch, Executive Director for Rondo Community Development Services, and I'm glad that we only have to do this every five years. But this is a planning document that's required by HUD, as Mr. Barron has said, and it, um, allows us to access over $7 million a year in federal housing and community development funds. Um, as he said, we went through a very robust, um, public engagement process. Um, we had, uh, a market analysis done by an independent consultant, looking at the rental market and the for-sale market, in addition to lots and lots of data that was provided to us from HUD. And the plan contains goals and strategies for, um, five different areas. The three main ones are increasing homeownership, addressing rental housing issues, and ending homelessness. And each one of those has specific strategies and nu- numerical goals, a dra- of, a, a catch to each one of those goals. And we, we would be happy to answer any questions, and we hope that you do take a minute or two just to look at the document. Thank you.
Are there any questions for my colleagues, for Ms. Koch, or the panel? Ms., Ms. Radvian? You're muted, Ms. Radvian.
About that, thank you. Um, I really just wanted to say thank you to, uh, Ms. Koch and your team. Um, I took a look at the document, and it's really impressive, and, um, I think you've got, you know, the heart of our community, uh, or you've got the, the needs of our community in your heart, and I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work to bring down that, uh, those funds that will, um, you know, support some of the most in need in Anorond County.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion at this time? We will now open the public hearing on Bill 40-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Uh, no, Madam Chair. We have had no submissions of written testimony on this bill.
The public hearing on Bill Number 40-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 40-20.
Bill Number 40-20, An Ordinance Concerning Anorond County Consolidated Plan, Fiscal Year 2021 Through Fiscal Year 2025.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too had the opportunity to review the report, um, not just the executive summary, but the full report, and, and it, it is very interesting. I did want to ask, uh, in creating affordable housing, I, I believe that things are going to have to do with targets, and communities are going to be created, et cetera. I guess my question would be, what has our track record been from the last plan to now, in terms of our ability to achieve the goals? And, you know, how realistic can we be with goals in here? I know that there are obviously, you guys, some people are probably I just want to understand where we've come from the last plan, in, in terms of the goals of homeownership, rental affordability, and affordable housing, and ending homelessness.
Ms. Koch, were you able to understand his question?
Yeah, in, for Morona Community Church Development, yes, I was. I think I, I think I got the gist of it. But yes, um, there is, within the, the planning document, there is an analysis of how well the county did over the last five years, and its ability to accomplish those goals from the previous consolidated plan. And most of what we do is we really look at what kind of dollars we think are going to be available, and what we realistically think we can achieve. So we've, um, we've gotten close to probably 98%, 97% achievement rates in previous five-year time periods.
Well done. Thank you.
Mr. Pruski.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Andrew Pruski, Councilman District Four. Um, Ms. Koch, I know you were here. Since we're talking about the consolidated plan, we also had a bill to limit the number of people getting kicked out of their houses. Can you give an update on, uh, how that's going? Are you continuing to receive calls with folks that are having trouble with rental assistance and things along those lines?
Um, so Kathy Koch from Morona Community Development Services, yes, we continue to, um, get lots of calls. Um, the county has just appropriated an additional $3 million for the eviction- for the eviction prevention program through the CARES Act. And we're over nine hundred people that have called for assistance, not only through ACDS, but also through our partner agencies, which include Partnership for Children, Youth, and Family, Community Action Agency, and the Lighthouse, all of which have basically run out of money. And we're appropriating additional funds to those agencies. But we have over nine hundred people. And what I think the secret and one of the good components of that program, from our program, is we're doing extensive case management. And we're really looking at each person to, when we pay the rent and bring them current, if they are going to be able to continue to be able to stay in that apartment, so that we hopefully are making a good investment to keep people in their units. But yeah, over nine hundred calls.
Thank you, Ms. Koch, Madam Chair. Just as a follow-up, I'd like to thank you for what you're doing because I've actually had a couple of constituents in my district who participated in that program. Of course, we're still dealing with the price gouging piece, and hopefully that will be addressed later on. But thank you for this consolidated plan and the efforts you're doing to keep people in their house, besides, you know, getting folks for a living. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One quick follow-up. How much total, Ms. Koch, has the county appropriated or allocated from the CARES money to the eviction program? That you were just saying the county executive had sent another three million. How much total is gone then?
So from the CARES Act, three million. Now, the other dollars, there's like five hundred thousand in county funds, there's five hundred thousand in federal CDPG funds, and then also LDC, VLT funds, five hundred thousand in VLT funds.
Okay, but so, so far, only three million from the CARES money? Okay, thank you.
Councilman Volkey, I'll also remind the council that as part of the bill that created the appropriation of the CARES funding, there is a reporting requirement. And I believe the council received its first report a week or two ago.
Thank you. I wanted to take a minute to give my heartfelt thanks to ACDS on the work that they do to serve our most vulnerable residents. We know in this county that affordable housing is an issue. We also know that homeownership is a chance for folks to bring themselves out of generational poverty. So these are issues that are near and dear to my heart. So thank you for all the hard work. You have a lot of really interesting data on your website that could use a really hard analysis so we can put this plan into place over the next five years. And I look forward to working with you and your amazing staff to continue to serve the residents of Anorond County, especially those that have been hurt most, most direly by this pandemic. I mean, we've talked a lot about the sixty-three thousand Anorond County residents who are suffering from job loss. And the work that y'all have done to turn on a dime, to serve those nine hundred callers, is, is really amazing. So thank you. Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Koch and also Ms. Karpowitz, I wanted to join in, to take the opportunity to say how grateful I am for your efforts, especially in my district. I know that you work a lot directly in District One, but I firmly believe that that work impacts residents and businesses positively in every other district in this county. And so to thank you for your tireless efforts is not quite enough. I'd like to thank you for being indefatigable champions of the folks whom you're sort of stewards in, in entrusting, you know, county money that has been invested to your organization and in carrying it out. You're doing an excellent job, and I can't thank you enough, especially on their behalf.
Thank you, Councilman Lacy. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on bill forty dash twenty? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill forty dash twenty.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number forty twenty is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number forty-two dash twenty.
Bill number forty-two twenty, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation and transfer of funds.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, would you like to introduce your panel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron, for the administration. Joining me at the virtual table from AACPS is Mr. Shagnovich and Mr. Stansky and Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Mr. Teru is in the virtual audience if we need him. Bill forty dash twenty appropriates approximately nine point four million of additional funds to the Board of Education from this, from state and federal grants, as well as local funds. And an amendment will be offered at the appropriate time to correct the numbers in the bill that weren't available at the time of introduction. Mr. Shagnovich and Mr. Stansky are available to answer any questions and add anything they may have missed. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Shagnovich now.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the council. Madam Chair and members of the council, this is the annual bill we bring in the fourth quarter. It's a supplemental appropriation recognition and expensing of those funds not previously anticipated, as well as an adjustment amongst the fourteen state categories, fourteen out of the fifteen that we utilize here within Anorond County that allows us to balance our budget at fiscal year end, that being twenty twenty, and allow our budget to close in accordance with the applicable federal, state, and county requirements. With that, we'll turn it over to any questions the council might have.
Mr. Pusky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Per ethics protocol, as usual, my spouse and employee, the school system, and this bill would impact, so I'm just disclosing that as part of the record. Thank you.
Ms. Hare, your hand was up? Oh, Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you for letting me jump in. I'll make this disclosure that I am personally a part-time teacher for Anorond County Public Schools.
Ms. Hare, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. So a little bit like bill forty twenty, there's a lot of money moving around in here. And some of these categories, I'm hoping maybe you can help me out, Mr. Shagnovich, just with maybe why we underran eight million dollars in instructional salaries and seven million dollars in fixed charges. The pupil transportation, I get, that makes sense. The overrun in textbook and classroom supplies also makes sense, but the operation of plant and the maintenance of plant, I think we saw a fourth-quarter transfer bill last year that included significant sums going to the operation of plant also. And I'm just, these are some pretty large sums of money. Maybe I'm just not used to seeing quite this big a dollar amount in the fourth quarter because it's only year two. But it just seems like maybe, why are we missing so badly at the end of the year? Do we not know this, you know, six months ago, kind of a thing?
Certainly. Again, Alex Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer here, for the record, and joined by Matt Stansky, Director of Financial Operations. I will say this is the largest one of these I've ever seen in my career here. And as I will explain and give you some details shortly, it largely is almost all attributed to the pivot that we had to make in February, March, March specifically, when it came to COVID-related items. The budgets before you was really formulated and put forward by the superintendent in December of twenty eighteen. And we're sitting here today in June of twenty twenty, after well over a year and a half and a global pandemic and an economic downturn that clearly weren't anticipated. So for example, instructional salaries carries not with it, not only the conventional salaries, but it carries significant sums of monies for substitutes, which we've not utilized since March. Any training activities for teachers that have not utilized, we've not been able to onboard because of restrictions regarding fingerprint printing and credentialing individuals and processing them. We've had departures and resignations, retirements, you name it, and not being able to onboard us. We've had a larger lapse in salary than anticipated. So I'm just going through some of the examples that sort of led to why you'll see some of the underspending, again, not previously anticipated. But if you take a look at instructional textbooks and instructional salaries, as you mentioned, so in that category, for example, we have purchased over thirty-one thousand Chromebooks for students. That's not something that was on my mind back in January or February. It, we've paid an additional stipend to our teachers because traditionally, supplies that they use in the classrooms are bought through the front office of the school and provided to the teachers. So if they need dry erase markers or post-it notes or whatever that is. But when they were put in the position of having to teach from home, for example, they at home didn't have those supplies. So many of them went out and bought easels and dry erase whiteboards and markers, et cetera. So the monies that we would have had in the school's material of instruction accounts, we actually turned around and distributed directly to the teachers in accordance with the IRS provision. Similarly, for our teachers and other administrative staff, we leased in excess of three thousand two hundred seventy-five laptops. We are almost, we are almost universally a conventional desktop-type operation. If you go into almost any office, any classroom, et cetera, you're going to see desktops with boxy CPUs and the big monitors. And those machines are required to be hardwired because that's the benefit of our school system. Obviously, with everybody having to go remote, not having the machines or the technology that would allow us to do that, again, we went out and on a, on a pretty quick turnaround leased about three thousand two hundred seventy-five computers. In operations of plant, there's a number of things. One, we had, I'll very kindly say, we had about three false starts to school. Remember, school closed down and it was going to be for two weeks. So we went about the process of sanitizing schools and bringing in help and purchasing large amounts of sanitization equipment. And then it got delayed yet again, and it got delayed yet again. So we went through that exercise more than once. And the operations employees all also were provided, our board of vision and maintenance personnel, they were the, food services, operations, and maintenance were the only emergency essential personnel they're required to put, to come in each and every day. They didn't miss one day. They never telecommuted a single time. They never stayed home a single day. And if they did, they had actually used or leave. Other folks were sent home, and many did not report in now for, you know, gosh, twelve, thirteen-plus weeks. So that, that's a lot of them, Ms. Hare. And I can certainly go into, into more detail. But again, this is the largest I've ever seen. I would hope to not ever see this again. You know, thirty-something years of doing this, this made my eyes pop as well. So you absolutely are on point that this is atypical for us. And, but we're also in an atypical period in our lives currently.
That was really helpful. Thank you so much.
Are there any further questions from my colleagues on forty-two dash twenty? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from the members of the public on forty-two dash twenty?
No, Madam Chair, we have received no written testimony on this bill.
The public hearing on bill number forty-two dash twenty is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number forty-two dash twenty.
Bill number forty-two twenty, an ordinance, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation and transfers of funds.
Thank you. It's my understanding there's an amendment? Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
This amendment, amendment number one, this amendment revises the amounts of revenue from the sources and the appropriated funds in the local education fund to match Board of Education-approved appropriations from the meeting held on June third, twenty twenty.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Lacy, so moved.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Barron?
Amendment, Pete Barron, for the administration. Amendment does exactly what Madam Secretary does, said it does.
Is there any discussion? Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Shagnovic while he's here? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Rodvian? Ms. Rodvian? Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
I have some technical difficulties. Aye.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes. Ms. Hare?
Okay, good.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number forty-two dash twenty as amended.
Ms. Rodvian? Give her a second. I heard an "I." Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number forty-two twenty is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number forty-three dash twenty.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I believe I might have frozen for a minute. Can you repeat?
Please read the title of bill number forty-three dash twenty.
Thank you. Bill number forty-three twenty, an ordinance concerning self-insurance fund claims for payment, increase amounts to be approved by Central Services Officer.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron, with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Nicole Lining from Central Services and from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. Ms. Christine Romans was unable to join us this evening. So the county is, bill number forty-three dash twenty, the county adjusts the county's self-insurance fund, increases the amounts that are allowed to be approved by the Central Services Officer. The county is self-insured for workers' compensation, automobile, general liability, and some property damage claims. The administration accounts for this self-insurance activity in the self-insurance fund. The fund is administered by the Self-Insurance Fund Committee, which is comprised of the Chief Administrative Officer, the County Attorney, the Central Service Officer, the controller, and a member designated from the Library Board of Trustees, the Community College Board of Trustees, and the Board of Education. Under current law, the Self-Insurance Fund Committee approves all workers' compensation and general liability claims greater than ten thousand dollars, but less than a hundred thousand dollars. Under this proposed bill, the Central Service Office would have the authority to approve all claims less than ten, excuse me, less than twenty-five thousand dollars. The Self-Insurance Fund Committee would have to approve all claims greater than twenty-five thousand, but less than a hundred thousand, while the county council would still have to approve all claims that are above a hundred thousand dollars. When the Self-Insurance Fund was established in nineteen seventy-seven, When the self-insurance fund was established in nineteen seventy-seven, the authority limit for all lines of coverage was five thousand dollars. In two thousand and fifteen, this limit was raised to twenty-five thousand for automobile liability and property damage claims. Workers' compensation and general liability was raised to ten thousand. This bill raises the delegation authority for the workers' compensation and general liability claims to be the same level as for auto and property damage. The authority level for workers' compensation and general liability claims is currently is inadequate. It's important to understand, medical inflation and general inflation, as in fact, any American can tell you, are two very different things. Looking at, from a standpoint of general inflation, five thousand dollars in nineteen seventy-seven is equivalent to twenty-one thousand dollars and, and change in twenty-two thousand dollars. That's using an inflation rate of about two percent. When you take into consider, into consideration inflation rate for medical expenses, that far outpaces regular inflation. One source I found had it at five point four seven percent per year. So in that case, five thousand dollars in nineteen seventy-seven would be about forty-nine thousand dollars and change in, in twenty-two thousand dollars. So to be clear, the reason we are bringing this legislation before the council is to save taxpayer dollars. In recent years, we have encountered issues with attempts to resolve claims on the day of the hearing, and due to the lack of the authority, when a few thousand dollars could resolve the matter. Instead, we are forced into a hearing and often obtain a result that is in excess of what, that what could have settled the matter. Raising the authority limit to twenty-five thousand for workers' comp and general liability claims will permit appropriate and expeditious claim handling for the benefit of Anarundel County employees and its citizens, while still reserving the most serious cases for the self-insurance fund committee, as was intended, or the county council for the largest claims above a hundred thousand. So with that, we ask the council to move favorable on this bill.
Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andrew Pruski, District Four. Mr. Barron, you also did not mention that the county council used to have cars, health insurance, and retirement, and that was all taken away. So we are also saving the taxpayer dollars. I know we had a great debate about our salaries a short time ago, so I just want to make sure that that also has lowered the self-insurance costs for people. I do remember there was also, I think, a council member got in an accident, they had to use this self-insurance fund, so there's things that obviously are there. But I appreciate you explaining kind of the history, of course, you know, a can of soda, you know, back in nineteen eighty was probably, you know, twenty-five cents, and now, you know, you're paying ninety-nine or a dollar. So obviously, things change, but thank you for that explanation.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Barron, I'm not sure if you're the right one to answer this or not, but I'll just ask a couple of questions, because I'm curious, how many claims per year are below?
Mr., sorry, Madam Chair.
I was just making sure everyone heard the question from Mr. Volkey.
I was actually going to ask Mr. Volkey to repeat the question or confirm, just you're asking for the number of claims that would be covered by this bill, that would be affected by this bill?
No, so I was asking, what's the number of claims per year that are being resolved that are under this, and I will add, and over this? So sort of what's, what's the breakdown that you're looking at?
It's a good question. I'm going to ask Ms. Lining to try to answer.
Last year, in this last fiscal year, we've had fifteen claims that have gone to the self-insurance fund seeking authority prior to trial. And during that time, eight of them would have fallen in this range. The other ones were larger, and they involved various types of coverages, but primarily workers' comp. There is another element that is the after-the-fact reporting. Every result that comes in or every decision by the workers' comp commission that's over ten thousand must be reported to the self-insurance fund committee. Now, in doing so, these are decisions like verdicts, so we're obligated to pay them unless we appeal. I would say probably five to ten years ago, we were reporting out seven to ten a month. We are at forty to fifty a month now. And that's claims that now the self-insurance fund committee has to review at each meeting just to acknowledge and put on the record, even though the decision's already been made, the judgment's been entered, and it's just a matter of the value is higher now.
Excellent. So Ms. Lining, I'm going to follow up with you, because you seem to have that beat on the answer.
Okay.
So how many will fall between ten thousand and twenty-five thousand? What's the workload that we're alleviating for the self-insurance fund by passing this bill?
I would say by half. By half.
Okay.
Aside, aside from alleviating the work, it's also putting us in a position where it allows us to get payments to our employees more promptly as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick follow-up question on that, I think I heard that the, of the fifteen claims, that eight of them would have fallen in this, in this range, in this ten to twenty-five thousand dollar range, of those eight, how many went to a hearing and had a judgment that was higher than, than the ten thousand dollars?
These eight didn't, because we received the authority, we were able to make the offer to settle, and we were able to resolve it without the necessity of hearing.
So of these eight that would have fallen in this range, none of them actually went to a hearing?
Correct. And of these eight, only three were workers' compensation claims. There were four general liability and one professional liability.
So to, in my mind, that suggests to me that perhaps the process is, is working exactly as it should, where they, you know, when they need authority for more than the ten thousand dollars or so, they go and, and ask for it and get it to settle the claim. And so it's not necessarily one person making that decision. I am sensitive to the idea of the workload cutting, but it, but it also sounds like the procedure is working right now. Is there, is there really a situation where it's not working?
Well, I, one of the items that we don't track, and I can't speak to, is how often we're walking on, into the courthouse on the day of a hearing, and someone wants a thousand or two dollars more to settle, and our hands are tied at that point. We can't, I don't, we haven't tracked to see what the result has been in that case when it has gone to hearing and rendered a decision. But I can tell you that it's happened enough, and there's been enough concern expressed by the Office of Law that we discussed this and brought this forward.
Are there any further questions regarding bill forty-three dash twenty? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public on bill forty-three dash twenty?
No, Madam Chair, we've had no submissions of written testimony on this bill.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number forty-three dash twenty.
Bill number forty-three twenty, an ordinance concerning self-insurance fund claims for payment, increase amounts to be approved by central services officer.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to support this bill, and I appreciate the answers to the questions. I do hope that maybe some, next year, we can kind of just revisit this. I'd like to understand, maybe next year, how the comparison works in terms of that percentage of claims that are settled and how it's all working, and whether we're still seeing the same number of settlements on the courthouse steps only at a much higher dollar, or whether this actually does move the needle in alleviating the workload. So I'm just going to put that request out there, as just sort of a polite request, that hopefully we can take a look at this again in a year or so.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the administration. Councilwoman Hare, the administration will be happy to work with you on that.
Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the-
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill number forty-three twenty is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title, title of resolution twenty-one dash twenty.
Resolution twenty-one twenty, resolution confirming the adoption of the Anarundel County, Maryland, twenty-eighteen Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
This is an administration resolution. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the table is our new Office of Emergency Management Director, Ms. Priti Emmerich, I am from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. Resolution twenty-one dash twenty adopts the twenty-eighteen Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, requires each jurisdiction to have a hazard mitigation plan, and for that plan to be updated every five years. A jurisdiction that does not adopt the hazard mitigation plan is not eligible for federal disaster funding. The main goal is to protect the lives of residents and reduce loss of property. The county has future work on integrating hazard mitigation and climate change initiatives into other county strategies. Ms. Priti Emmerich, our, our new OEM director, can talk about these changes and the updates to the plan. Just to note, the city of Highland Beach approved this plan, I believe, two weeks ago, and that was one of the holdups to get them to approve the plan. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Emmerich just to say a few words, and then we're happy to answer any questions.
Hello, Priti Emmerich, Director of Emergency Management. Good evening, council members. Like Mr. Barron had said, FEMA requires each jurisdiction to have a hazard mitigation plan in order to receive federal funding. The plan goes through a variety of topics. Number one, the natural hazards that impact Anarundel County. I can give a rundown of the top four. Number one is flooding. Number two, hurricanes, tropical storms, nor'easters. Number three, severe weather storms, excuse me, winter storms. And number four, tornadoes. There's also a discussion of the critical infrastructure and residential and community properties in Anarundel County, and what the government, the county is doing for floodplain management, and also the permits and building codes that limit, limit development of buildings that are vulnerable to flooding, especially on the coastline. As Mr. Barron had mentioned, some of the new items in the plan focus on climate change and sea level rise, and that's something the county is working on towards the future in integrating some of the studies they have done into county strategies and county projects that will continue on in the next couple of years. And I'll be happy to take any more questions.
Are there any questions from the council? We will now open the public hearing on resolution twenty-one twenty. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we have received no submissions of written testimony on this resolution.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of resolution twenty-one dash twenty.
Resolution twenty-one twenty, resolution confirming the adoption of the Anarundel County, Maryland, twenty-eighteen Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm looking at, I think it's section eight point three, mitigation objectives and strategies, because I think it's, that's what, at least in the summary, indicated were the change pieces from this plan, from the last plan to this one. Is that right? Am I looking at the right spot?
Did you say eight point three?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, there were some changes in the goals of the mitigation objectives and strategies. Are you speaking directly to some of the new sections that were written, or?
Well, I guess what I'm looking at is, I just want to understand what exactly are the new pieces of this plan? So looking at section eight point three, looks like that's where the goals have been updated and some things added. So I'm trying to understand what exactly are the new pieces in here?
So I could direct you to some of the other new pieces. When we're talking about the sea level rise and the climate change, and especially the archaeological historical assets, those were the major updates to this plan. If you go to section three, three point four. Those are more of the new sections that were not part of the previous.
Okay, thank you. And so that's the resiliency, climate change, and sea level rise consideration. Those are the new pieces that were added?
Yes.
In that section, what specifically is it that the county is putting as a goal or as a strategy that is different from what we had previously?
Sure, so a part of the, the, excuse me, the county general development plan, twenty-fourty, which is still being updated, I think COVID-nineteen kind of delayed that a little bit. They talk about some of the climate change studies they have done, and that to incorporate that into the general development plan, we weren't able to incorporate a lot of what was said because it was still an update form, which FEMA understood. Obviously, in the next update, five years, they're looking to, to, for us to include more of that.
Okay, thank you. So how does this tie in, if at all, to the city of Annapolis and the resiliency authority that was passed at the state level, and, and sort of the bonding idea that they might be able to issue some new bonds to do projects that relate to that resiliency authority? Does this tie into all to that?
So how that ties in might be addressed in their plan, and not in the county plan.
Mr. Volkey?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Are you looking to be recognized again?
I, I was. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I was having a delay there for a moment. So is there any change in how the county is going to be funding programs or projects as a result of this hazard mitigation plan being adopted? I know it's for federal funds to receive them, but is this going to change at all how we spend money?
No, it isn't. Really, this is just a, a compilation of what is, what is currently being done and being looked at.
One last chance, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number twenty-one dash twenty.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler, I believe I heard you say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, resolution twenty-one twenty is adopted.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Hare, so moved.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until July sixth, two thousand and twenty. And with that, I would like to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Please stay safe, stay well, and enjoy the beginning of summer.